Today is now eight ten, I like a motion to open up the regular board meeting of December 2nd, 2019.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next upcoming meetings, the December workshop meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December 31st, will be held on January 6th, 2020, with the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees immediately following. That's what we agreed upon at the workshop, is that correct, Board?
Yes.
Yeah.
And everybody's good with that still?
Yep.
Okay. And the following workshop meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 28th, 2020, at Next, I'd like to open up the continuation of the public hearing, continuation of the November 6th, 2019, public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, motion passes. Mr. Magrino.
Excuse me, yes, good evening. As the Board is aware, this first one is with respect to time limit parking on Orange Avenue and Blovetway. I believe the Board members have the law in front of them. This is actually the third time we're here. I don't believe anybody really spoke on this at the last couple of public hearings. I went over it last time, just changes some times so that makes it clear as to when parking is permitted and kind of gives an opportunity for people to come in and shop and leave without having people there parking all day, which is something the merchants were looking for. So, that is what it is, it's there, I won't go through each one. I know we have two new Board members, so I don't know if they'd like to kick it over for time to think about it, or you know what the Board's feeling is, but this one is prepared to be voted on tonight if you so desire, if not, we can continue it, see if anybody has any public comment tonight.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak in regards to amending Section 254, the code of the villages suffering? Do the two new Board members feel comfortable with us proceeding with this?
I do.
Sure.
Okay.
So it's been, the village clerk, I understand, to circulate it and...
Correct.
...see comments and they're part of the record.
The Village Board, the rest of the Board, comfortable with proceeding with this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Close the public hearing.
This time, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? This time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Public hearing is now closed. How's that, the resolution?
We need to adopt it, we don't want a resolution.
Yeah, I don't know if the adopting resolutions made it to tonight's agenda, so...
Right, it's not.
All right, if they didn't, I'll ask to put it over one more time.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So we don't have the resolution present, we like to hold it over till the next month, so we have the resolution in front of us for the Board to review and adopt. Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing at our regular scheduled meeting on January 6th at 7:05?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you. Next continuation of the November 6th, 2019, public hearing, to consider a local law amending Section 254 of the Village of Suffolk code, entitled vehicle and traffic to establish passenger loading zones in the central business district.
Right, again, this is Section 254, 23, we're proposing adding, make it 23.1. This has undergone some changes, we've made some additional changes and are going to make some additional changes. This is basically, there's been some issues with folks using parking spaces in downtown for loading and unloading goods and wares, you know, for the businesses. We do have loading zones for that purpose, so this is to encourage the use of the loading zones for that purpose and passenger parking zones for, you know, people who are just parking and the, you know, the regular parking reasons and for passengers loading and unloading. So, that's going to change a little bit, but if anybody has any questions, you know, I can answer them tonight, otherwise we'll have it in final form for, I'll ask if this be continued to January 6th as well, and we'll have it in final form for that night.
Okay. Do we have anyone from the public here that would like to speak in regards to this matter? Come on up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Catherine Fermaine, Seven Sussex, Suffolk, New York. The question I have for you this evening is, the loading zones that we currently have, how, what's the distance from the actual stores? I don't know, I'm just asking.
I'm not sure.
I'm just looking, like, how far are you starting to walk to make deliveries for the businesses?
Right, well, I think, what are, do you know the loading zones, Amy, as you...
There's several loading zones, ones in front of strategic management, there's one on Chestnut Street, there's one...
Lafayette Avenue, Park Avenue, Chestnut, so yes, there are, we've received numerous complaints about the trucks loading and unloading and leaving, just for the public information, that the trucks were loading and unloading, occupying regular passenger car spots, and at the same time leaving their vehicles idling, which is not too desirable if you're outdoor dining, so that's why we're modifying a bunch of the Village codes in regards to loading, unloading, idling, and standing time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So, if there's nothing further, I'd ask that that be continued unless any of the trustees have any questions on it, if I can answer.
It's time to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, just continue it.
To continue, I'm sorry, continue the public hearing to, no, hold on.
January 6th.
January 6th at 7:10 PM. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Next public hearing is continuation of November 6th, 2019, public hearing, to consider a local law to amend this Section 254, code of villages suffering, entitled vehicle and traffic to establish restrictions on the idle, idling parked vehicles in the central business district. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
So again, this is with respect to idling of vehicles, the county does have a law on this, but it has some other requirements. This is very similar to the county law, no more than three minutes, and again, for the reasons the mayor stated earlier, with outdoor dining and folks who are using the downtown, they don't want to have cars sitting there idling. Again, it's, I don't know how often this would be, I don't want to say enforced, but how often it would come up, but certainly it's good to have so that if something comes up and there's a constant situation, it's at least something that would be a reminder so that they can't be, you know, a vehicle can't constantly...
It does come up from time to time, from some of the merchants that have tables and chairs outside during the summer and vehicles that park there and leave their car running and idling, which is, it's a good tool for the code enforcement officer, the police officers to have.
Mr. Magrino, you had mentioned that the county has a similar law, is there any reason that our law wouldn't be word for word identical to the county law?
The county law has certain civil remedies, such as going to County Health Department, et cetera, this is a Village code, so it's going to be a Suffolk Village law, so it wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't send it to an administrative review at the county. You know, I guess theoretically, a police officer, code enforcement, well, not so much code enforcement, but I guess a police officer or sheriff's officer could, you know, write the county law, but this would, again, be mostly, this is something to encourage compliance, frankly, not about getting a fine.
I guess, I was just suggesting it might be useful or good if the county already has a law to at least match the terms.
It is, except for that one portion I'm mentioning, everything else is...
Then that's fine, that's fine, that's all I was concerned about, because if, I don't know the numbers, but let's say that ours is three minutes and theirs is four, I just think they should be uniform.
They are, they are in that respect, it's more about the remedies that are different.
Very good, thank you.
So again, with this one, I'd ask that be continued so I can do, we can do the adopting resolutions, I thought we had them.
So I have a motion to continue the public hearing, hearing till January 6th at 7:15 PM.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you, thank you. Fire Department, Chief Lapore.
Good evening, first from the Fire Department and myself, I'd like to congratulate the new trustees, look forward to working with everybody in the next year, and I'd also like to thank everybody for attending that meeting at the hose company to go over the specs for the truck, and if you guys have any questions, make sure you get ahold of me, we'll do our best to answer any questions you have on the specs. I hope we covered everything pretty much that night, I know you weren't there, but if you have questions to call, you know, please get ahold of me, not a problem.
Yeah, no, once again, I know I apologized to you via email, but...
No, we have no problem, we have no problem meeting with you afterwards and, you know, going over some if you have any questions, because we'd really like to, you know, get moving and, and that's it.
I have a question.
Sure.
Could you tell me when your department meetings, or when the firemen meet in each particular house?
Well, the company meetings are tomorrow night, at eight...
So is that every, you know, monthly?
We have a monthly, a monthly, a monthly company meeting, each company has a monthly company meeting, it's usually the first Tuesday of the month, the hook and ladder starts at eight, the hose company starts at 8:15, and then we do weekly, every Monday night at seven o'clock, we do training.
And would you object if I attended once in a while?
Well, the company meetings, it's not, that's really up to the company presidents, I don't think anybody would have an objection if you wanted to, if you wanted to discuss something, if you wanted to come on Monday nights, that's basically company trainings, so I'm sure you can come to those anytime you want, I don't think anybody would have any objections.
Thank you. Sure, you can set that up.
There used to be a Fire Department liaison back in the day, is that something that you guys felt you didn't need anymore?
Yeah, it hasn't been working out, it's been very hard, all the officers now, except for myself, all work shift work, so we have, we have a bit of a hard time getting everybody together for those meetings. We do still have them, but they're not as frequent as they used to be.
Okay, who from the Board used to go for that?
Anybody from the Board there in a while.
Okay.
If we have questions, I'd just bring it, bring it back to the Board.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, good?
Thank you, everything else good?
Yeah, everything's good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, keep up the good work. Ms. Mills, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board, and I also congratulate Joe and Chuck, congratulations, welcome to the Board, I look forward to working with everybody here again this year. So a few things that we have coming up, tomorrow night over at the Community Center is Trophy Night for the Midjimaunies, that's at 6:30, as for the two new trustees, anytime we have an event in any of our facilities, you're always invited to stop by, say hello. Tomorrow will be at 6:30 to 8:30, and the Midjimaunies recently won a state title, so there'll be a nice, a nice evening over there. Santa Letters at the Palisades Mall, every year we participate with Make-A-Wish, and there will be a Make-A-Wish event on this Friday, December 6th, at 9:15 in the Palisades Mall. It has been done at the Nanuette Mall in the past, but unfortunately, the Nanuette Mall is not open anymore, so it will be at the Palisades this Friday at six, this Friday at 9:15 in the morning.
9:15.
Yes, so that will be a nice opportunity. This weekend, I don't know if anyone's heard, but there will be a big parade in town this weekend. Saturday the 7th at 6:30 PM, up Lafayette Avenue, will be a great parade, we're working on the committee, Chief, Joe, Charles, a whole bunch of us have been working together, Mayor is on the committee, it's going to be a great evening here in Suffolk, the shops will be filled, the streets will be filled, so we're really looking forward to it. And then at the Community Center, we will have photos with Santa, we have, the Salvation Army is handing out hot chocolate, so we've got a great community event, and we're really looking forward to it. The grand marshal at the parade will be our Pearl Harbor survivor, Chickalela, we're so excited, one of our local friends, Paul Graham, is making a float for Mr. Galella and his family to travel down Lafayette, so we're really, really looking forward to seeing him. On the next day, Sunday, December 8th, will be the Pearl Harbor Ceremony, and again, Mr. Galella will be there and he will be our, one of our guest speakers, so we're looking forward to seeing him on December 2nd, December 8th at 2:00 PM, so the Board is also invited to attend the Pearl Harbor Ceremony. The Dare Dance, Chief, will be the Friday, December 13th, at the Community Center at 7 to 9, and then the Dare Toy Drive, which I know Chief will talk about, will be over at the Community Center the following week, and then the Fire Department will be visiting, Santa visiting the village on December 22nd, which is a Sunday, so a lot of good things, it looks light on here, but there are a lot of big events that we're planning and getting ready for the end of the year, so we look forward to finishing up and having a wonderful holiday season. And then the other item on my agenda, it wasn't on my original agenda, because we met with the Health Department after this, Amy, I don't know if there's, is there a resolution for it tonight, or is this just discussion?
Just a draft.
Just a draft, okay, so this is discussion. The Health Department has been working with the Recreation Department for the last eight months, Nancy, Christopher and I attended in a seminar with the Health Department called the Walking College, and we learned what it takes for a community to be walkable, pedestrian healthy, pedestrian safety, so the Health Department has a grant, they are going to award the villages suffering in the amount of $8,000. This is a five-year grant, that they have given four years of money to other municipalities, this year would be the fifth and final year of that grant, they're offering $8,000 to the villages suffering. The Mayor and Nancy and I and the Health Department met about two weeks ago, so we are trying to discuss it, going further, to see if it's something that the village would like to accept.
What would be involved on our end if we accept?
Well, we've, again, we've had discussions about what we would need as a village, it hasn't been confirmed what items we would want, this grant would be, we would purchase items and we would get reimbursed, so we have up to $8,000 to spend on something that the village would like to purchase and to have for the village.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Is there a deadline, Kathy, on the date?
There is not a deadline, but they do want to get it, once we get it confirmed and a resolution is done from the village on our end, they'll be able to do their paperwork, so that, right now, as I believe there is no time constraint, but it will hold everything up until we can start purchasing anything.
This also sort of coincides with Safe Streets and working, tying the streets and bike trails and activity centers together, such as, you started, good, it's taking a long time, but we're getting there, like, Safe, Traffic Calming, there's a whole host of items that they have in their own toolbox from the county that may be beneficial to the villages suffering, so by participating, participating in this, it just, working closely with the county to develop a Safe Streets program, to get some aids and signage, traffic calming, direction, I think it's a great thing for the village too, you know, I mean, it, it's up to us, to how far we want to participate and what we would like to purchase to help our streets become more safe.
Right, and that's where, there's no set in stone item that we want to purchase, it's once we do the resolution and we get to the next step, then we can decide what we do want to get. I know we've worked with them, for those of you that haven't seen it, I know that, I know most of you have seen it, the walking path around the village, we now have two of them, one goes up to Good Sam, one goes around the village, the Health Department really enjoys working with the village, so that's something that we're very proud of, that they're, they chose us for their fifth year for this grant.
It goes along with, you'll see them at the bus depots, Safe Streets, they have all these logos that they post throughout the villages and through the county, be seen at night, wear a light, like reflective tape, I think it's a great idea, so if the Village Board so pleases, I have the, the resolution here, accepting funds from the New York State Department of Health, grant creating healthy schools and communities component, provided to the Rockland County Department of Health. Do I have a motion?
Could I just offer a suggestion, the, the end resolution language, the last paragraph refers to there being ultimately a contract with the Rockland County Department of Health, I would just ask that that portion of the resolution be revised to indicate subject to the approval of the Village Attorney of that contract.
As stated by the attorney, subject to the approval of the Village Attorney for that said contract.
Correct, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Great job, Kathy.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Chief Osborne.
Nothing to vote on tonight, just some informational items, and I'd just like to start off by welcoming Joe back, Trustee Corrigan and Charles, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And all the other appointments tonight, congratulations to everybody that was appointed different positions, in the month of November, we had 724 police calls and bladders for the month, we did have two incidents, but I just want to mention, I always stress the importance of response time, I've been preaching that for a long time up here, and it comes down to Village Police and the critical nature of it, two incidents this month alone, we had two incidents, both people in their twenties, one was last week, unfortunately, it was an overdose, no ICAN save, officers brought the person back, did turn out okay, was a twenty-something-year-old male here in the village, due to the quick response and the training of the officers using ICAN, emergency first response tactics, he was brought back to life, and this past Saturday night, a Village woman, early twenties, collapsed in the bathroom unexpectedly, all coated out, not breathing, officers got there, we had four officers responding, all working, it went up, worked CPR as well as some other tactics, and she is in critical condition to get sent to an hospital, but I always say it's a second chance of life they gave her by the quick response time and the training they had, so just want to make sure the Board understands that's the critical part of the jobs, which we don't get it every single day, but when you do get a critical incident, the response time is absolutely, it's imminent, you have to be there quickly to take care of these...
And who were those officers, Chief? Who were the officers?
The first, the first two officers were, the first incident were Officers Samura, Sergeant Fantasy, second officer on Saturday night was Officer Ventarina York Adams and Cable, responded to this.
Great job.
Thank you, did a great job, and we've, unfortunately, had to do this more than once, and we hoped it was a situation we'd never find ourselves in, but just due to the inherent nature of police work, we're going to find ourselves in those situations, so I felt the Board should be aware of that, because a lot of times over here, probably negative stuff, which is the nature of this position again in our jobs, but we did give two people a second chance of life for the month, so. We're doing a toy drive, we've been doing this for 29 years, our toy drive helps that Village families, every family could possibly get in the village, through the schools, through the churches, through the organizations, we're helping every Village family, however, it's gotten so big, other areas rely upon us, other police departments and municipalities through the county call us to help them out, and it's gotten so big that we've been helping them out for years, as long as our Suffolk families are taken care of first, we're glad to help out, which is what we should be doing. That's underway, we've been putting a lot of time into that, on a off-duty time, that goes till December 20th, all of you are invited December 20th to the Community Center, sorting and bagging, and then the 21st, we give everything out, it's coordinated by off-duty officers from our department, from the Suffolk PD, so we thank everybody for the assistance with that, we will be reaccredited, this, I know I talked to you guys about this last month, but we'll be receiving the certificate from the New York State, New York State, excuse me, Division of Criminal Justice Services, on Thursday, there's a panel that has nominated us for reaccreditation, as I stressed to you, we had to meet 110 standards by the, by the Division of Criminal Justice Services, which basically, in terms of you as a professional police department, only 20% of the departments in New York State are accredited, it's a very grueling process, it's a time-consuming process, but it's worth it because we have a manual, which we turn over to, whether it's an insurance company, a law firm, when there's any issues come up, and we are complying with 110 standards, basically which covers everything from prisoner transports, to arrest, to domestic violence, to officer hiring, to officer conduct, we are, we have met 110, all 110 standards, and have been nominated and are receiving our reaccreditation for the third time on this Thursday, so I just want to let you know that, that was awesome, and last but not least, Mayor, if you're okay, you and I have spoken several times, you've been in a lot of meetings with me, to bring up, and particularly for the new trustees, and if you else hasn't heard about the criminal justice reform, if you're okay with that, can explain a little bit to what's going on?
Yes, if you could, please, thank you.
Feel free to jump in, you've been at the meetings with me as well. For the new Board members, for anybody here that hasn't heard me preaching about this before, I've been a big proponent and opposition to the New York State Criminal Justice Reform, I'm on the Rockland County panel of police chiefs that have met with the state and local politicians, and I've been in the county panel for the last probably four to five months. January 1st, 2020, the New York State Criminal Justice System will be changed drastically under what they call the New York State Criminal Justice Reform, there's basically two parts to it, one is a discovery process, which means all paperwork, every piece of information that we gather during an arrest, will have to be turned over to Defense Council within 15 days, which means we have to get it to the District Attorney's Office within two days. The amount of work that's going to take is unbelievable, departments in the county have put in for a million dollars extra overtime and extra manpower to do this, I don't think we're going to be that drastic, there's bigger departments, but the point is, it's going to be a growing process and a learning process for all of us. To get this paperwork done and out, we have to have officers stay longer, we have to do a lot more, we have to get a lot more information out quickly, and just to give you a background of the magnitude of this, 4% of the cases right now, we turn over all this discovery material, 4%, as of January 1, 100%, even if it's not going to be used, we have to turn it over. It's gotten so bad that every piece of video, from the second we pull in to the back parking lot with a prisoner, which is on video, we bring them downstairs, put them in cell, for as long as they're in our custody, we have to turn over all those cameras, not just when the person came in, but for the 12 hours after it, when they're held, so it's going to take us hours and hours to upload the information. It's a law that was put on the books without any input from police or prosecutors, we are fighting it on the prosecutor end, the police end, and I think the Mayor, you witnessed this there at the meeting in Clarkstown, this crosses line, this isn't a one-party fight going on, we have liberal Democrats and conservative Republicans all fighting a similar fight to fight this, these criminal justice reforms...
It's unfounded mandate.
...because of the amount of work and effort it's going to take, crazy, it's going to be crazy, so that's only part of it, that's part of it. Witness information, if a person witnesses a crime, whereas we only had to turn over at the end, if it was going to trial, has to be turned over now within 15 days. I do think you'll see a drastic reduction in witness preparation, that's my professional opinion, if I'm talking to the police chiefs and confirm them basically on a daily basis over this, because when people realize their information is going to be given through the defense attorney and the defendant within two weeks, you're probably going to see people getting nervous, and rightfully so, that was not thought out very well by the state, but the second biggest point, which scares me more than anything, is the bail elimination, whereas we just sworn in a judge tonight, we worked with Judge Adwar, she did a great job, we worked with her, we were just talking about this tonight, the criminal justice bail reform means that, unless it's a qualifying offense, which is a very small, limited amount of offenses, the judges can't take bail, you could go on school grounds and sell a pound of cocaine to a child on an R. P. Conner school, we can't take bail on that person, they have to be released, you could go on the school grounds and sell a firearm, loaded firearm to a child, we can't take bail on that, and the list goes on and on. on that, and the list goes on and on, I'll get to the list, I provided the board out, I'll get you, to the trustees, the list, just to show you the magnitude of what's gonna happen, when you look at bail, when you look at bail, bail is to get the person back to court, but it's also to protect the community, a judge has four standards, and two of the standards are the severity of the crime, and the threat that that person faces to your community, such as a domestic violence, a judge used to be able to say, this person has committed a domestic offense, I'm gonna put this person on bail to calm things down, we can't do that anymore, so you're gonna have domestic violence suspects going out to domestic violence victims within twelve hours back to their residence, it's absolutely ludicrous, the victims' rights, people I've been working with, they're all with us, these are things that are going to be, place our communities, every community in New York State at a high risk, you're allowed, basically in January first, the jail doors are gonna open up, and they're gonna release tons of prisoners back into New York State, and our Rockland County jail is no different, based on these bail reforms, we've met with state officials, I don't even think half the state officials who voted for it knew what was in it, because I made it a point to contact state officials that represent suffering, and tell them what, what they voted for, and the seriousness of what they've done, it's gonna create problems for our courts, when we issue a warrant, this is insane, our court now has to notify the defendant that they have court in two days, that you have court, they have to notify them by phone call or text, to notify them, instead of just giving them a, an appearance ticket, they have to notify them, a lot of more work upon the courts, um, arraignments have to be done within twelve hours, that's gonna pose a problem for our judges, and if we can't get a judge from suffering to do it, they're trying to set up a central arraignment court in each town, but the problem is, when we're minimum staff, that means I gotta bring an officer in overtime to take that person to be arraigned, for the arraignments that we need, still need to do, so, I, I just want to make sure, and I'm not trying to paint a doom and gloom picture, I'm just painting a reality picture, because I've met with, I've met with both sides of the extreme political views, and they're all looking at the same, what happened, but I think, one of the things that really sticks with, with me and most people when you hear this, someone can break into a residence, commit a violent crime within your home, subjected to violent crime, by law, they are now able to go back to your residence with an escort, to look through your house at the crime scene, they can literally go back by law to do that, if we can file an appeal to say we shouldn't let them go in, because of damage already gone to the family, we can do that, but they can appeal that as well, and basically what the courts are telling us is, they're gonna let these people go back into residences, so, it's absolutely, it's a, it's a ludicrous reform, it's the most sweeping reform, I understand people's view of bail reform, you want people that shouldn't be in jail to have a chance to get out, they couldn't, they had a number of people who couldn't afford it, I get that, but this went way beyond this, this is a New York City, very strong liberal New York City contingency pushing this, and it sways some of our local politicians, who I honestly don't think understood the severity of what they were voting on, we've been swinging hard, Mayor, you were at the press conference last week at the county courthouse, I've been swinging hard at this with my fellow police chiefs, and the district attorney's office, and we really just want to let you know that, there's a lot of unforeseen issues that are gonna come out of this, which, which I don't know, I can foresee and think I know what's gonna happen, but there's a lot of unseen expenses that I'm, we have the choice to build in, and everybody in the state's gonna have to do that, so I just wanted to make you aware of what we are dealing with, if anybody has any questions, I've been pretty well versed in this for the last five months, feel free. Eddie.
Chief.
Exactly, Ed brought up a good point, Ed, retired police officer, you get it, it's gonna be our responsibility, exactly, so the warrants are gonna be overwhelming for us, so we're gonna, we're gonna be, we're gonna be taxed on every single front, every department is, Town of Ample will put in one million dollars, and said they're gonna put in more just for this reform, Clarkstown, it's about a million, I spoke to the chief and the supervisor, George Holman, the other day about this, so, Eddie, you brought up a great point, it's gonna tax everybody, it's gonna tax everybody, the only thing we can hope for is all of us stand together and urge our state politicians to amend it, to where they're dead a little bit, I understand people that can have a chance to get out, that are injured, shouldn't be in jail, but also to address these serious issues and these consequences that we're all gonna face, living here in New York State.
Is there any opportunity, is there, is there any groups getting together to challenge this and cause a stay, so that it doesn't go into effect January first?
Steve, great question, Steve, we exited a press conference with all the police chiefs, district attorney, sheriff, the uh, mayors and the county supervisors of municipalities came with us, we've all made that request to the state, Steve, exactly, you said for ninety days from January, can you give us ninety days, we can maybe redo some of the bail reforms, just to not, just to give judges discretion if there's a violent criminal, or someone that shouldn't be out there, to make sure that they, we don't let them out. Steve, we've heard nothing yet, and that was, you know, two weeks ago, a week ago maybe?
Yeah, two weeks.
It could, Steve, we're hoping.
Let's cross our fingers on that.
Exactly.
Alright. Eddie, we're looking for a moratorium for what, three months, I believe, that's what they were requesting.
And interesting thing, Mayor, personally too, is, you got a Republican, Democrat, all of them, we're getting up there, it wasn't one party, which I thought was very interesting.
And, and, and the ironic thing was that the press conferences were held throughout New York State simultaneously, I think, what was it, ten o'clock, I don't recall the time, ten thirty, and all municipality, all counties were holding the same press conference and, and getting the message out to the governor's office in Albany, it's an unfunded mandate, it's gonna cost the village money, manpower, and time.
Correct, correct, and it's sort of, there's nothing we can do, because if we don't comply with these standards, our cases, I basically brought up the point very early on, in the committee meetings, what if we don't do, what if I say I can't do it, they basically told us simply, your criminal cases get dismissed immediately, so it's not like we're gonna say, well, we have to do, we've been working on this every day, downstairs with policies, we're still gonna get domestic violence suspects arraigned, just need to slow it down a bit, but we have to release them, on assault threats, which is the most common, or strangulation, the most common charges we get in domestics, we have to release them, and I think that's what's disturbing me more, and the victim, I've met with the victims advocates, they're on board, a hundred percent of us on this.
Yeah, very concerning for the safety, uh, Center for Safety and Change was there, spokeswoman from there, just for the domestic violence alone, and the court, the state recognizes that domestic violence is, is um, very harmful.
Yeah.
And they're gonna, they're not gonna remand bail on them.
Exactly, exactly, very, very limited qualifying offenses, Joe and Charles, I will get you guys, I think you should have a list of, just so you see, I'll get it to you, just so you get an idea what's going on, and it's not, I'm not just blowing a horn if they're trying to get more, more manpower, I understand that, for that type of situations, but I, I just think, we need to be prepared, everybody does at this point, so I'll, I'll give you any information I can get, I have a folder, I think, for every meeting I've been at for the last probably six months, I haven't done to, if any possible, any other concern, any other questions that come up, and if not here, and you think of something, please give me a call, whatever I can do to help you.
Um, Chief, I want to go back to the first topic you brought up, um, where you had those, um, those two incidences where rescues had to be performed, um, you mentioned, time is, is a critical factor, um, do you see any benefit of having EMT services in the village, I'm thinking of incidents where the urgent care is required above and beyond what your, your force can, can do.
Yeah, fair enough, very good point, Paul, we're trained in AED, CPR, our emergency first responder, we do have an officer that is a paramedic, where he operates as a police officer, this is, was a paramedic before, Kim and Officer, most of the officers have had pretty in-depth training in this, but the good thing is, Paul, being in suffering, the paramedics, a lot of times will come out of good cement, we have, every medical call we go on, the Rockland Paramedics get dispatched, in around the valley, in on score, so the paramedics are usually there pretty quick, because they're basically based out of this area, but don't get me wrong, they could be in a qual, a slope further, deep in the amount of Bellarama, but EMT certification, would it be good to have further training? I think it's always good to have further training for officers, much as we can get, but we do get the paramedics pretty quickly, we were working on this girl, and the paramedics were there very quick, because what we'll do is, if there's a very critical urgent matter, instead of, you know, we go to calls, people have the flu, or they've fallen into themselves, maybe into the leg or something, we're not gonna yell, step it up and get there quick, but if, something like the other day, we all yelled over, step it up, CPR in progress, they're gonna probably get there a little faster to help us out, but your, but answering the question, yeah, an EMT is always good, sure, always good, but the medics do respond immediately in any medical call.
Okay, yeah, I'm just thinking of, yeah, if, if they are tied up with another issue, and like you said, Salford or Hillburn, and we have an incident here, um, I don't know if we, you know, have enough incidences here to justify that, but, I mean, we do have, we do have facilities that are kind of under, underutilized right now, I'm thinking the Leo Leiden building is underutilized, I'm thinking of the property that we're contracted with, uh, on Washington Avenue, that has a building that, you know, we don't have an identified use for right now, so, um, you know, beyond the parking, so, so, I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if, and Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you, you've looked into this at all, or if, and I don't know if the chief is the best person to evaluate whether or not that type of a service.
We started to look into it, and we continue to look into it, I had a few meetings with the supervisor of the Town of Ramapo in regards to Ramapo Ambulance District, Special District Number One, um, I spoke with the treasurer, I spoke with the chief, um, it's, it's pretty involved, but we will continue that conversation to see what we can do, as you said, underutilized space, maybe Leo Leiden, um, trying to implement that own, um, ambulance district within the count, within the town, I mean, it's a, it's a huge undertaking, but uh, yeah, we started to explore it, absolutely.
I think it's been, Mayor, Mayor, we've, we've spoken about it several times, one thing you should understand, if we, we tone an ambulance out to Ramapo Valley, and they're tied up, or the rigs are tied up on other calls, because remember, they cover Hobart, Montombello, and Ammont as well, Slothburg has their own, they will, the problem is sometimes the delay getting the tones out, we'll get them out, but we have to wait for a response, the response will send a second set of tones out, that will then get Spring Hill or Feist, Feist is out of South Spring Valley, comes in the village, Spring Hill is over in East Ample, they'll come in, or Slothburg comes down, there could be a delay, and obviously your partners will take them, Paul, because obviously all of us, we're gonna make sure we get the fastest response for our residents possible, we have been discussing, because we just want to make sure we can get a quick response with this, which is absolutely, is crucial, crucial.
As long as we're getting the paramedics right on scene, and, and, you know, in the most, uh, the quickest fashion, and then following up with the bus, with the, with the ambulance, that seems to be the issue that's hindering the transportation back to the hospital.
Yes.
The evaluation and the criticality of the, of the patient is evaluated on scene by either PD, who's, some are trained, and then followed up with the, with the paramedic, Rockland paramedics.
I will say also, we are definitely the busier area in the village, because the amount of people we have, with the downtown sports complex, with the medical calls, just to give an example, I, I ran a, a query not too long ago, when I was to get a lot of buildings, we're probably there, a year each building, four hundred times each building, maybe just for medicals, so that's just, so we, we do get a lot of calls.
Yeah.
We're a busier area, so, and I, I didn't mean to take up so much time, but I thought you needed to hear that, everybody, to be aware, because by the next meeting, it's, it's an effect for us, so, alright, thank you.
Thank you Chief, um, and just, congratulations, uh, tell the officers, great job on the Narcan saves, and that, that quick response, which saved two, two individuals, it's really, it's really amazing, and then going back to your, your um, certification, and the hundred and ten standards that we achieved, Lieutenant Lachlan and yourself, and Lieutenant Mallon really put your, your best foot forward in getting those certifications, and keeping our police department certified is great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open up to audience participation, if you'd like to speak, please come up to the mics, let your name and address.
Hi, my name is Trisha Beto, Thirty Highland Avenue, uh, first of all, congratulations to Joe Corrigan and Charles Barone, uh, for uh, coming onto the board, Joe, once again for coming back, and Mr. Markounis, um, our mayor, but I have to tell you, Mr. Mayor, I'm a little disappointed in you tonight, um, there was a lot of people who would have liked to have been here at the meeting tonight, and I personally am probably the biggest cheerleader and biggest, biggest fan of our DPW, but the reason that they get to do such a great job is keeping people off the streets when we don't need to be, so that they can do their job, and tonight, people would have liked to have been here to support the new trustees, and to be at this reorganizational meeting, and the roads were really not that great, so for the senior people of this community, I speak and say to you, disappointing, very disappointing, that you went on with this meeting and didn't allow for everyone to have the opportunity to be here, so I hope that in the future, you'll take that into consideration, um, I had a question, you had mentioned some training, um, for the trustees, um, by Keen &amp; Bean, I just was wondering, is there a cost for that?
No.
There's no cost for that, and what is the reason behind that, is it something that you have implemented, or is it something that has been recommended by Keen &amp; Bean?
It was both, we discussed it, you know, being able to have the trustees fully aware of their roles and responsibilities, along with the mayor's roles and responsibilities, what we can do, what we can't do, how to move about, making appointments, holding meetings.
And is this voluntary, or?
It's voluntary.
Voluntary, just, just, just curious, I have a question.
Nothing wrong with educating people and making a more informed decision process.
Just curious, just curious, the other thing I wanted to talk about was, um, the chief had talked about the Narcon training, and I just wanted to say, the Narcan saves here in the Village of Suffolk, and I just want to say that our police department does such an amazing job, um, with those things, and I personally took, um, a Narcan training class over at the Mawai Library, um, last week, uh, the chief has, was good enough to put it up, um, as an informational, um, class for our village, to see if anyone wanted to attend, and I did attend it, and I really walked away from there, like, with a heavy heart, because there are so many of these overdoses right here in our backyard, and it's just really, the numbers were very, very upsetting, um, I'd like to suggest, um, I know what the New Jersey law is, I've looked into a little bit of the New York law, I'm not really sure that I'm interpreting it properly, because I'm not an attorney, and I'm certainly not a police officer, but I'd like to ask that possibly we look into maybe having something like that in the Village of Suffolk, because I, I now can carry Narcon, and I can actually administer it, I'm certified, um, but I think it would be really wonderful to give the opportunity to others who may want to also, um, to have a certification.
That's great, that's, that's great, um, absolutely, we've done it, uh, two or three times in the past already, but I think we can continue and schedule another one.
I think it's really important, and I think that people need to learn, um, what actually is going on here, and, and how to, to help, because it's not always someone who has an opioid addiction, it's sometimes a child who gets into medication that they're not supposed to, into opioids that they're not supposed to, it's, it's, um, you know, it's an accidental overdose, so, you know, we really, it would be great if we could educate more people and have more people certified in, in carrying Narcon.
Kathy, if you don't mind, see if you can look into that, we'll have another training seminar here.
It was really great, um.
I attended the two, the two of them so far, so it is eye-opening.
The medical director of Valley Hospital did it, and he was very informative, and it really was great, so, and, and given that our police officers are giving an enormous task right now, um, with this bail, uh, reform, you know, if we can help add any, a little bit, that would be great too, and in, in bringing that up, um, I'd like to ask that the, the board look into, um, what the chief's overtime and extra expenses are going to be with this new bail reform, um, and maybe keep track of that, so that we can submit, you know, in a time, time to time, maybe bi-weekly or monthly, to our elected officials, to let them know what it's costing this village, um, for that, and to also take a look at that number, um, and make sure that we are staffed, uh, the police department is fully staffed, Chief, are we down any officers right now? Okay, so we're down officers already, um, so I think we really need to take a hard look at that, um, you know, this is gonna be, this is gonna be something that's gonna hard hit this village, um, so I think that we really need to take a look at and make sure that our police department is fully staffed, and that we don't incur more in overtime than we do if we would properly staff our police department, so I would hope that the board will work with the chief and make sure that that's looked into, um, so that it doesn't end up in the, you know, penny, penny wise, I think we need to be on that front. Uh, the last thing I wanted to talk about was the, um, hiring of the attorney, um, Mr. Mayor, do you plan on signing that contract with Keen &amp; Bean?
We're gonna have further discussion on it.
Okay, because I'd like to, um, you know, I'd like to say that you, unfortunately, you cannot sign that, that, um, that contract without board approval, so while you can appoint a village attorney, and it may not be confirmed by the board, you cannot, as the mayor of this village, enter into a contract without board approval, so I would urge you not to sign any contracts, um, until something has been, you know, you've all come, yeah, you've all come to, uh, an agreement on how this is going to go forward, um, you know, I worked with Keen &amp; Bean as mayor, and I have to tell you, they're an excellent firm for, they were our labor attorneys when we were, when I was on the board, and they did a great job, um, and I'm not saying that they wouldn't or don't do a good job as a village attorney, but I also would like to say that I like my village attorney here, um, I think it's important that we have, uh, a present village attorney, someone who's here daily for the mayor, for the board, um, so I mayor, for the board. So I hope you'll consider that going forward, whether it be Mr. Rice or whomever the board approves. I hope it will be someone who will be more present, and I hope you will still keep Keenan Bean, because I think they're the best in the business for labor contracts. And that's about all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Michael Curley, I just wanted to start, there was a, it was a question about, you know, whereabouts the law may be on hiring an attorney, or not hiring an attorney for a village, okay? Well, if you look, there's, there's actually, if you look under, if you look under Village Law 4-400, 4-412, 5-222, and you read through it, you'll see, one second, I'm sorry, I just heard this tonight, so I had to go against it. 4-400 does not confer this power on the mayor. In fact, the power to employ an attorney rests solely with the board of trustees of the village, and as a general rule, a public official acting alone has no authority to engage independent counsel, even, even though his services benefit the village. It is true that even though a pub official has no authority to engage independent counsel, the village will ratify the hiring, okay? Well, you put a motion up here, which, which was disgraceful, you put a motion up, and you got no second. And you went ahead and said, I'm hiring them anyway. Why would you put a motion up if you weren't going to listen to the other people anyway? Okay? And how would you, as an attorney, accept that? You sat there and accepted that. That was the most, of all the years I ever walked in here, I've never saw such incompetence of a lawyer. We can go back and look at the tape, we can go back and look at the minutes, but you never should have allowed that. You have an obligation to all of these trustees, not just the mayor, because that's what the law says, okay? The other lawyer, Mr. Klein, asked you to tell the law, so I went and spent time looking it up, because you didn't have it right on board. But the lawyer could have told you, but he didn't. You can't act as a lawyer independently just for one person up here. You have to represent this board, which represents the Village of Suffolk. I'd like to see that, okay? And I'm not, I'm not making anything up, I can go further on with the cases, Abloh, okay? With New Hempstead, they actually had a case in Havestown, New York. But I'm not going to go, if they want to fight with law, I mean, I haven't seen anyone else present any law. I presented to you, no one else has presented any, right? And they've had plenty of time to do it, but it was just blatant disrespect for the, for the law, the opinions and practices of this state, okay? So you have no authority to act alone, Mr. Mayor. You can't go out tomorrow and hire an attorney. You cannot do it, okay? So I'd like you to rescind that tonight, okay? But I will say this, this board has a right, a 100% legal right, to go into a contract with any attorney they want to. You have a right, when you're speaking, to make a motion. Someone has a right on the board to second it, and you have a right to take a vote. That's the law. You cannot, you cannot even control an agenda of meetings unless this board agrees that you're the only one that can control it. The agenda is for the whole board of trustees representing the village equally. So they all have a say. And sometimes it's three to two, sometimes it's four to one, sometimes five, or sometimes it's one, Mr. Mayor, against four, which happened. So how did you come out and say, well, I'm hiring them anyway? It doesn't work that way, okay? You're not Castro, and I won't allow you to be Castro. And there, there are decisions with the New York State Controller that represents this, too. So you go look at the New York State Controller, okay? This is not Michael Curley saying this, okay? This is, this is, this has been standing, okay? I'm not going to waste too much time, because I know people want to go home, it's dangerous out there, okay? But I will say, this board has a right to make a motion, to do a contract and hire a board, and this lawyer cannot stop you. He cannot stop you. If you go, if you go at this point tonight, and say, I'm, I'm making a motion for a contract, and there's a second, all right, and then you have a vote, it stands. And I'll take that any day over that vote, over the vote that was done prior, and I'm telling you legally, that would win in court, not the other one, what you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Curley, yeah, there was no vote taken earlier, as you pointed out. And trustee Barone, when we get to this section on the agenda of trustees, I was asking, are you going to bring up the motion that you had earlier?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Good evening, Tony DeVanzo, Crestwood Drive. I'd like to know where this board stands on Novartis property, the quarry, and the new assessment they want to get. Is this...
So the Novartis property is, is being litigated right now, and we would not comment on that. That's in tax deteria, so they're, they're grieving their taxes.
I know that, that's my question.
Right, well, they're in litigation now. And what was the second? The quarry?
Yeah.
The quarry is presumably under contract at this time for sale. That's with the town of Ramapo.
What about the zoning on these?
The zoning remains the same.
It's going to remain the same?
Yes.
Do you know what my fear is? Well, you guys can guess what my fear is.
The zoning will remain the same.
And everything else?
Light industrial.
And this new board will uphold the zoning the way it is? We're not going to let them creep in. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, next, Mr. Charles Awicky.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to update the board on an item that came up in the past, came up in the workshop. That was the Chestnut Street Railroad entrance, pedestrian entrance. So Chief Osborne, myself, Joe Hunt, we met on Wednesday of last week. We assessed and tried to develop a scope that would be appropriate, and essentially do, be effective in doing what we really are looking for, in terms of pedestrian safety. We did meet with a contractor to get a budget estimate on a few different options. Should have, should have that, you know, within a week or so. Once I have it, I'll pass it along to the board.
Great, great, thank you.
I am requesting payment authorization for application for payment number one, in the amount of $391,896.53 to Tilcon New York for the roadway improvements Phase 10 project.
So the resolution authorizing payment number one to Tilcon New York Phase 10 roadway improvement project. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I am requesting payment authorization for application for payment number one, in the amount of $67,498.65 to Tilcon New York for the village hall and police parking lot project.
The resolution authorizing payment number one to Tilcon New York for village hall and police parking lot improvement project. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I am requesting authorization for application, payment authorization for application for payment number one, in the amount of $151,920 to Diamond Construction for the 2019 right-of-way improvement project.
Have the resolution authorizing payment number one to Diamond Construction for the 2019 right-of-way improvement project. So have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I am requesting the board, a village board, to accept the resignation from Mr. Mark Focello, effective November 13th, 2019.
So have the resolution accepting the resignation of Mark Focello, effective November 13th, 2019. Resolve the board, the board of trustees accepts the resignation of Mark Focello, Laborer, effective November 13th, 2019. Non-proton. Do we have a motion, a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to add one item to the agenda. Had a brief discussion with the mayor earlier. I'm requesting the mayor to appoint Mr. Benjamin Price, Suffolk resident, to the vacated refuse department labor position, effective December 9th, 2019, at a pay rate of $17.30 per hour.
So I have a motion to hire Benjamin Price, effective 12/9, 2019, into the street department, at a pay rate of $17.30, filling the vacant position of Mr. Mark Focello. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
We need that resolution. Thank you. Mr. Janito.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, and congratulations to the mayor and trustees Barone and Megan Corrigan for the, the recent seat on the board.
Thank you.
What you have before you, the first two resolutions are actually the result of our recent borrowing, a short-term bond anticipation note that would go for a year. And essentially, back in, the first one, being that back in September, we amended a project, that is our project number 2020-002, which is entitled the 2020 roadway improvements. Essentially, we authorized borrowing for that project, but we had a bond resolution that actually allowed us to borrow even more. When we went to do our bond anticipation note, it was determined that it's better to borrow all of the money now, because some of the work would be done in the spring, early summer, and we would only have to take out one bond note, and avoid all the extra cost and effort of doing a second bond note later on in the year. So the very first one is to increase that project in the amount of $57,837. And as I said, the bond resolution was already adopted, so this is just amending the project.
So the resolution amending capital project 2020-002 to include full amount of authorized debt. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The second one, very similar, is project 2020-003, which is our parking lot B repaving. That's the municipal parking lot behind most of the stores in the middle of our downtown area. That lot could not be done this year due to some other planning for grants and other assistance in that project. And we borrowed enough money to be able to do that project in the spring, should everything work out okay. And in the event of that, we established this project, which originally we're going to have before you back in August, but again, held off, awaiting to see if the project we, the project outline would be developed. In any event, we're looking to put that project on the books in the amount of $300,000. Again, the bond resolution was already adopted, this is only amending the project.
So the resolution establishing the capital project 2020-003, 2020 parking lot B repaving. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I had a quick question. This $300,000 is, if, let's say, money comes in from grants and whatnot, would that reduce the amount we actually spend on this? Like, $300,000 is the overall?
Actually, I believe the project would be more than $300,000, and that is part of it. The grants will pay for the difference.
I got it, okay. I wasn't sure what, how this was applied. Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next resolution before you is establishing the position of village claims auditor, which we've actually had in effect for well over 30 years. The issue is this, is that absent the position of village claims auditor being established by the village, all of our claims prior to payment would have to come before the board of trustees, and each board of, board member, and the mayor would have to review each and every one of those claims, and then sign off that they were okay to pay, and only then would we be able to issue the checks to the vendors. Obviously, that's not really practical in today's terms, and especially since the board meets typically once a month. Many years ago, the village took the option of establishing a village claims auditor, which essentially was the village clerk, with assistance from the deputy village clerk. They would go through the claims, and then submit them to the treasurer for payment, and that's how we've been operating for a very long period of time. Unfortunately, in, in looking to see the documentation that established that, you'd have to look through minutes from the late 70s, early 80s, and it was just very difficult. There was no indexing for us to be able to easily find it. So this resolution essentially reaffirms what we're doing, and formally establishes it, so that if we're ever asked, we will have a copy of this resolution available.
So have the resolution here establishing the position of the village claims auditor. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution is authorizing me to attend the National Government Finance Officers' governmental accounting training in Austin, Texas, December, next week, December 9th to 13th. It's at no cost to the village.
So the authorization, a resolution authorizing Michael Janito to attend the GFA, New York GFAO Downstate Seminar on White Plains.
No, no, that's, it's, it's the one just above that, Mayor.
Sorry. Authorizing Michael Janito to attend the GFAO governmental accounting training, December 9th through 13th in Austin, Texas. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next resolution is to authorize me to attend the New York State GFOA Downstate Seminar on White Plains, December 18th, 2019. I believe the cost is $98 for the registration, and it would just be mileage and tolls, other than that.
To have the resolution authorizing Michael Janito to attend the New York GFOA Downstate Seminar on White Plains, December 18th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Oh, one last note. We opened up the meeting kind of talking about where we've come in the last four to five years financially. We, back in late 2015, being that we were at that time a BAA III, just above junk bond status, and with a negative watch or negative outlook, meaning that we would have gone into junk bond at any number of items just happened. We didn't have any bidders, we actually had two bidders for our notes, and one was extremely high, and the other one that kind of felt sorry for us bid two and a half percent. The one bank that held the note, and had most of our deposits at that time, refused to bid on the note because of our financial condition. Now, we fast forward to this November 14th, when we issued a note of about the same amount. We had seven bidders. The rate we received was 2% with a premium that brought our effective rate down to 1.35%. That's the difference between that A II and a BAA III with a negative outlook. When about a month, we're going to have another ratings call with Moody's, this time because we're going to be refunding bonds, which, I'll, I'll just take a minute for the new trustees to understand what we're doing. A refunding is very similar to a refinancing of your mortgage. We're going to be looking to take our bonds that are still outstanding from 2007, and the issue that we had in 2012, and with higher interest rates, refinance them, that's called a refunding, into a new issue that won't go any longer than those bonds, but will get us a better interest rate. us a better interest rate and save us money over, over time. Over time, it's expected to save us around $300,000, and it's 20-something thousand dollars a year, which is, is good. But because of that, we are going to have another ratings call with Moody's this month, December, and we'll let you know how that all turns out. But right now, from what we're hearing from them, it's looking very good. We're certainly going to hold our A2 rating, and it may be too soon to bump us up again because it was only October, that, the October 8th that they bumped us up to the A2. But I just want to keep the Board updated on that. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Janito.
Thank you. Mike, I was already feeling conflicted over voting for your reappointment, so thanks you for making me feel worse.
That's okay.
Okay. Trustees, Mr. Albert.
Yeah, I have several items I'd like to inquire about. The first, I actually sent an email about it earlier tonight. I noticed there, the information for the public is not generally being posted in a timely fashion on the website. For instance, none of the November agendas for either the board meeting or the workshop are posted on the website. And as we know, we spoke earlier, you called me up, it was, there was a delay in getting the December.
Yes.
Information posted. I do think that we should make an effort for the public to have this information posted a week ahead, or as practically close to that as possible. I think day of is truly unacceptable.
Okay.
And, and I'm not sure why there's a slowdown in getting the stuff on the website if the public wants to review what was discussed at a previous meeting, so that they can then go to the video and cover, you know, the right video for the event that they want to look up. I think we should make a point to be more effective at getting that information on the website.
Okay.
Another item I wanted to bring up is, I was looking over, which has been provided for a couple of months now, three, four months, I believe, we've been receiving the overtime tallies. And some employees are getting quite a lot of overtime, and in fact, one, and maybe there's a reason for it, but I'm not sure, one employee has well over 500 hours of overtime so far this year, and in fact, the cost of that overtime, for just, just the overtime, not counting the salary, just the overtime, is well over $100,000. And I'm not sure of the circumstances, because we have not discussed this, Mayor. I apologize for not bringing it up ahead of time, but I have a feeling that we have maybe a more cost-effective way to address whatever the issue is that's causing the success overtime, and I'd like that we look into it.
Okay.
And the third item, I just wanted to kind of keep on the burner. I've brought it up previously, the Hillside Avenue property, and find out what the status. I know the fellow declared bankruptcy, but I know there was a court date. I wasn't sure where we stand with that at this point.
I believe Mr. Magrino can give us a quick update on the Hillside, 27 Hillside.
Yes, the county, I'm not sure what's happening with the county. He was in court last month, and we actually were on for trial. He actually resolved, he pled, well, it's public record, but he pled guilty to the charges that he was charged with, so.
Meaning what? What charges?
It was.
Roughly?
Storage, illegal storage, unregistered vehicles. There were several charges. So, again, that happened in open court, not saying anything that was, you know, and it wasn't so much, again, about the fine, but, you know, with admission as to what's going on there, and further action can be taken. I'll speak with the mayor and the Board about that separately.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Gerard?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Barone?
I'd like to make a motion to enter a contract for duties of village attorney.
Can I get someone a second?
Second.
No, we're just in the trustee section now. We're in the middle of a conversation now.
All in favor? Well, this proposal that's being presented here is the first time I'm even hearing of this proposal, other than tonight, earlier this evening. I'm trying to move away from political appointments, as you can see. Keenan Bean was on board when I came on board as Labor Council. We did have Terry Rice also. Terry Rice did, I believe, resign or retire. At that time, we brought in another attorney, which wasn't working out, wasn't cost-effective. He also left, and that's when we utilized Keenan Bean for Labor Council, along with Municipal General Council and the Real Estate Council that we're currently utilizing. It's added huge cost savings to the village. I'm gonna go with, I said initially $80,000, but on additional negotiations with Keenan Bean and other issues that we're litigating, there were several hundred thousand dollars in savings, cost savings. I believe you're diluting the mayor's authority here, and it could result in the trustees having representation separately from the mayor. It's definitely not in the best village, in the interest of the village. I think that the attorney or legal representation should be held to the standard that it's been at. We've been using Keenan Bean, once again, cost-effectively. I can't imagine trustee Gerard would even consider doing this when he, you know, wouldn't even vote on any other appointments. And with the cost savings that we're doing now, I just think it's definitely not in the best interest of the village or suffering.
I just want to add in, as I mentioned earlier, just for the record, I'm in favor of having a contracted attorney. I think we are saving a bundle, but I have to say, I believe that the original contract was entered into without any kind of negotiations, at least none that I was privy to, and I think it would be a good idea to put the attorney position up for bid and find if we can do better than the price we are getting from Keenan Bean. I think that would be advantageous to the village residents. I don't think it would be good to just take one, one attorney thing over another attorney thing. I think we should meet and discuss other options. I have no particular options. I have none on the table, but I think we should put it out to bid.
Well, I agree that you should, we should meet, since there seems to be a difference here, meet with the Board in an executive session and discuss it. Absolutely. I mean, you're presenting a contract that each trustee has in front of them, and the mayor does not have a contract in front of him. The mayor was not aware of any particular move. As I said, I'm getting away from political appointments. This seems, I don't even know what to say about it right now, but there's nothing wrong with meeting. You made that suggestion earlier. I said that we should meet and discuss it, absolutely. But to sit here and present a contract from an attorney that has resigned or retired from the village five years ago, without the mayor's knowledge, I believe, is ludicrous.
Mr. Mayor, what Steve just suggested about putting this out to bid is what I spoke to you about on Wednesday afternoon. And your response to that was to come here and say, "I'm reappointing Keenan Bean." So you're clearly not open to a bid, because you said, "Okay, I'll, I'll consider that," and then you came in tonight and, and you just said, "I'm gonna reappoint."
There were considerations.
It doesn't sound like you're open to a bid. So we, we, we came with, and did our own due diligence and came up with this.
Okay.
As well, when you first came on the Board, you and Mr. Morris brought in a new attorney as well. You tried to elect a new attorney as well.
Okay, so I recommend that we go into an executive session to discuss this issue at hand and seek legal counsel.
I don't, I don't know that it's an executive session matter. And our current legal representation has a conflict of interest to participate in that, so.
To the extent that the Board of Trustees and the mayor want legal advice, that's certainly an appropriate aspect for executive session. To the extent that the Board of Trustees and the mayor want to meet without legal counsel to discuss hiring, appointment, employment, those also are issues that are appropriately the subject of executive session.
And I also want to add, the village does have a assistant village, I'm sorry, assistant village attorney, Mr. Magrino, who may be able to sort of wrangle this matter without the use of Keenan Bean in an executive session, because I agree there is a conflict of interest in that instance.
There was an attempt to put up a vote earlier, which was denied. I think trustee Barone is now attempting to put up a vote. He's raised a motion. It's been seconded. I think we should put this to vote.
I'm not sure if we have, I, I need legal, legal advice on what's taking place here. That's what I need. I need to confer with an attorney to see if that's a, a motion that's acceptable.
Okay, so we can make a vote, and then you're, you have every right to challenge that. But I think we should make a vote.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I vote no.
I vote yes.
And I vote no.
We voted? I don't, I don't have any of the information, so we'd have to see. Let me see it. I don't even have it.
What are we, what are we voting for?
I don't know. This is, this is ridiculous.
We're voting to consider it? I'm not sure.
You're not sworn in to the trustee position, and you guys can vote on whatever you want. Having negotiated a contract with the attorney before you're sworn in. Now, you guys can vote whatever you want.
That's a good point.
At the table with the contract, and I think everybody can easily be appointed. I'm just, I'm just asking, President, how would somebody have a contract for the price when they're not actually sworn in?
How would a representing the village when they're not sworn in? Good point. Excuse me, I'm talking to the, I'm talking, I'm, excuse me, but I'm talking. I know, I'm, just let me finish what I'm saying, that's all. I know, I don't know. The attorney's reviewing it. You've been what?
I'm on the Board. This was provided, worked out, and I provided it to, to the fellow trustees.
Did you negotiate with Mr. Rice to have a contract?
Yes, I was part of it, yes.
Who else was part of it? The negotiation?
Mr. Rice.
Just you and Mr. Was anyone else present with you while you negotiated this contract? Excuse me, excuse me. I don't know, I'm just asking a question. I'm asking the trustee a question. Excuse me, I'm asking the trustee a question. Paul? Paul? Were you in negotiation with anyone else other than you and Terry Rice? You're not going to answer the question? I'm asking a question. Is actually, there's, there's, he is not answering a question for a specific reason, as noted. If he, if he was there alone, he would say, "Yes, I was there alone."
I was not there alone.
Okay. Where were you? Where did this negotiation take place?
What is that?
Terry's office?
No, I don't have to answer that.
Okay. I'm doing, you don't have to answer. I thought maybe it was in Terry's office.
These are irrelevant questions.
They are.
Where was I?
Yeah. Where were you while this was negotiated?
I don't know why it would be wrong.
All right, so don't, 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 don't answer. That's fine.
I guess it's wrong to go and ask someone.
That's fine. Okay. Yeah, all right. Out of order, all, let's, let's just take a step back here. I was just asking you a couple, here you go.
I need Ralph to summarize. What was, what was raised just now? I could not capture it.
We need to capture it for the village clerk, what took place.
In, in terms of what? In terms of the vote?
In terms of the vote and this contract.
I have a motion, and that was seconded, but I don't know what, what we just discussed here. What, just, is it just a review of a resume? What are we, what are we voting on? I don't know.
That's up to the trustees to explain. I don't know.
Well, what did you, I know you presented this, so what, what was the most?
It's a contract to...
This is a contract?
This is a contract. Between the village and Terry Rice.
The village attorney.
Well, it seems like the motion passed, so I think I have to check for legal advice that Terry Rice now represents the Board of Trustees and not the village.
That is correct.
Is that correct, Mr. Klein? Thank you. Please step up to the mic.
According to NICOM handbook, they opine that if the mayor and the Board of Trustees cannot agree on a village attorney, they each have their own attorney. The mayor has to be able to work with an attorney to run the day-to-day operations of the village, and if the village board wants separate counsel, that's what you just did. So you now have two attorneys, one representing the mayor, one representing the Board. This happens in some communities, but you're paying for two attorneys.
Can I explain that to you, Mr. Gerard?
That is according to NICOM. He doesn't need to sign a contract, Trish. According to NICOM, that is a conflict. The conflict is the mayor has to be able to work with his or her attorney, because if, so if he cannot, no, just hear me out. If he cannot, because he did not appoint that attorney, NICOM opines that the mayor has an attorney and the village board has an attorney. Doesn't matter if it's an attorney or a firm. That's my point. And if, I don't need a contract. I can be appointed as village attorney. The mayor gets to appoint the village attorney, subject to the Board's approval. If they cannot come to an agreement, which is what seems to have happened here tonight, they each have their own attorney. That's what NICOM opines. In fact, NICOM says it's a disciplinary violation for an attorney to represent the mayor when the mayor does not want him or her to represent them. That's NICOM's opinion.
Okay. Just answer that contract. There's no contract.
The contract will continue.
It can't continue. It's up until the very first.
But you're not listening, though. What I'm saying to you is, when the village board does not allow the mayor to appoint an attorney, the mayor gets to appoint his own attorney.
I understand that he's appointing an attorney to the terms and conditions of the law, not to the terms and conditions of the contract.
So what are the terms and conditions of the village?
A set salary.
It's set by the mayor.
Right, but not a signed contract.
So he's gonna set the terms and conditions, he's...
The contract is, please, you don't sign contracts.
Actually, you've signed contracts with previous counsel. You've had contracts with previous counsel.
This is a, this is a firm, this is not an individual person.
NICOM doesn't seem to make a distinction between the two.
No, it's great.
Okay.
And the mayor talked about holdover position, and there was no holdover.
It doesn't need to be a holdover. So the only way to resolve it is either the trustees and the mayor agree, or they disagree. When they disagree, there's a conflict, and each one has to have counsel. And if you want a second opinion, you can certainly ask the deputy village attorney. I don't know if you're deputy or assistant, I apologize.
Mr. Magrino, can you add to any of this?
What I'll say is this, yes, this actually came up, a lot of this came up, frankly, last year, when the change was made, if you recall. I was kind of interim for a brief period of time until Keenan Bean came on. I agree with what Mr. Klein said in terms of, let's just... I agree with what Mr. Klein said in terms of, let's assume for a moment, and the Village Board has a right, as adjusted, to vote for Mr. Rice to serve as counsel. There, certainly we'll be speaking to Mr. Rice. The mayor is entitled to his own attorney, so we are in the position of several other villages in this county that have two attorneys, and it becomes an issue, you know, at board meetings, and who's authorized to do what, and so there is, you know, there is going to be, we're going to have to look into this further in terms of the mayor's right to, you know, have an attorney, appoint a village attorney, be it a firm or an individual, but I do agree that Mr. Rice, and I think Mr. Rice would agree, that if the mayor, you know, the mayor has the right to appoint the quote-unquote "village attorney." The board has a right to enter into a contract with somebody to provide services. However, as Mr. Klein said, what, who's he serving? He can serve the board and the four members of the board, but in terms of the mayor, it's, again, I agree with what Mr. Klein said, there's going to have to be a, you know, some type of agreement or discussion with Mr. Rice about the roles that each will play, but the mayor is not, for lack of a better term, stuck with Mr. Rice as an attorney. It's the board, you know, you can enter into a contract if you wish, but it doesn't mean that that's it, and, you know, that's the end. So there's going to have to be more in this. I'm going to ask for more time to look into it as well, but, you know, there, it's not a situation where, and I think Mr. Rice would agree, maybe not, where you've hired Mr. Rice, or entered into a contract with Mr. Rice, and that's it, because the mayor does have the right to appoint a village attorney. So there's more, there's more to this.
From all respect, we've been looking a little on how already not before. You were saying
No, I think it's, I think this consideration should be taken under legal counsel without any, you know, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate your response, and
The counsel was wrong before.
Well, we will continue to have this discussion and have representation of legal counsel. Obviously, now the trustees have Terry Rice, which I believe was a political ploy that just took place, and the Village is suffering, excuse me, and that the general counsel and the associate, the Assistant Village Deputy Attorney, also indicated that the mayor does have the right to appoint counsel.
He said he needed
No, I, I'm confident in my position, what I said. I do need additional time. This is something that's come up, we got to, you know, I don't mind looking into it, but I do think it is something that, you know, all, everyone, and again, I'm in a unique position, I guess, of being, you know, agreed upon, so to speak, so I don't mind speaking to the board about it, but I do think that, you know, the board should be aware that the mayor does have the right to appoint an attorney. As I said, it's happening in villages in the county, and, you know, it may be a situation where you have to go to, you know, court and have a determination. I don't know at this point.
Would you recommend continuing?
Also, I just want to say, there's also potential conflict issues, so at this point, what I would just suggest is, if you'd like to hear, you know, if the board would like to hear from me and/or Keenan Bean, that it could be an executive session.
Yes, that was going to be my next recommendation.
If you want, if you so desire.
Right. Okay, so we went to trustee Barone, and now we're to trustee Corrigan.
Okay, so one of the things I would just like to put on record is that we as trustees are allowed to ask and speak to department heads and be able to get the information that we feel that we need to be able to do our jobs appropriately. That does not mean calling them every day or bothering them every minute or anything such as that, but I just want to make it clear that we will be calling and asking questions that we feel are important.
Great. Okay. Any further? So I'd like to make a motion now to go into executive session for legal advice. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes. Motion fails. You're putting the Village at great risk and expense by not even, not even considering the discussion of the legalities that we are challenged with here, with the trustees voting to hire separate counsel to represent the four trustees. I will follow up with the attorneys, both Mr. Magrino and Mr. DiMarco, and try to come to a agreeable resolution.
Well, didn't Rob Magrino say that he was going to get back to us with what he finds out further and that he needed some more time?
And he also made mention too, if we would like to discuss it any further in an executive session, he would be willing to if the board was willing to. So at this time, I'd like to motion to close the meeting.
Search first, so that he can explain to us exactly what it is.
They voted down the motion of the executive session. Motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.